We can start with the oath of office and then begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, and please stand for the pledge of allegiance to the right side of Mr. Elliott.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation on your hour in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and tonight we will start this meeting with the swearing in of newly elected board members. Could you please, and I'll call them in alphabetical order, could Commissioner Jose Cruz please come forward to be sworn in?
I'm gonna get something spot. Pose.
I, Jose Cruz.
I, Jose Cruz.
I solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Commissioner of Education.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Commissioner of Education. According to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Could Commissioner Cynthia Elliott please come forward to be sworn in?
Still sitting here.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duty of the Office.
Discharge the duty of the Office.
Of the Commissioner.
Of Commissioner.
Of Education.
Of Education.
Of the Rochester City School District.
Of the Rochester City School District.
According to the best of my abilities.
Okay, and could Commissioner Van Henry White please come forward to be sworn in?
He's about the whole clan.
Just raise your right hand.
Oh, right hand? This is my older brother. He tells me what to do.
Is everybody here? I, Van Henri White.
I, Van Henri White.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office.
The duties of the Office.
Of Commissioner of Education.
Of Commissioner of Education.
Of the Rochester City School District.
Of the Rochester City School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities. All right, give us a minute here.
Melissa. Okay, I'll take a moment to make a brief announcement that the ad hoc Common Core Committee, a meeting that was scheduled for 6:30 this evening, has been canceled due to the weather. And I will now open the floor for nominations and seconds for the Office of President for the year 2014.
I would like to nominate Vice President Van Henri White for presidency. Mr. White has advanced proposals for educational programs based on success within our district, including detailed study and exploration around replicating a school of the arts, establishing freedom school programs within our schools, improvements in alternative programs that are able to meet the needs of students with some of the most complex challenges. More recently, he has prioritized the development of programs based on successful New York State Performance Standards Consortium and Performing Arts models. In spite of some disappointments in some cases with these proposals, I am certain that Mr. White will never give up on his passion and his willingness to collaborate with our administration on replicating and advancing successful educational models within our district schools. Last year, when Vice President White discovered an error in due process relating to our suspension procedures, he acted promptly and in cooperation with district council to correct the error, resulting in an improved process for handling suspension appeals. I'm confident that the board's current serious collective concern with making significant improvements in our overall approach to school climate, discipline, and social supports will be advanced under his leadership. Finally, I believe in President White's sense of fairness and respect for our students and families. It is clear from conversations with students, especially with students who have overcome some very difficult obstacles, that the single most important factor in achieving success is often a relationship with a caring educator or set of educators or other caring adults. Students speak about how time spent with a teacher, counselor, or coach who really listened, who went above and beyond to show respectful interest in them made the difference between graduating or not, applying for college or not, being involved with the wrong crowd or not, and so on. Relationships are central to everything we do in schools, and I'm confident, Vice President White, that you will do everything in your power to ensure that we build upon that truth, whether through ensuring small class sizes in the early grades, professional staff development, or a number of other commitments that I know you hold. It's an honor to nominate you for President of the Rochester City School District Board of Education, and I thank my colleagues for their consideration.
Thank you. Are there any further comments? Okay, and are there any further nominations for the Office of President for the year 2014? Is there a second? Okay, I will take a roll call vote in alphabetical order, beginning with Commissioner Mary Adams. How do you vote for Commissioner White for the Office of President for the year 2014?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
And Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
And Commissioner White?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I have recorded a vote of six zero for Commissioner White for the Office of President for the year 2014. And Commissioner White has been selected for the Office of President for this year. Please come forward to be sworn in as President, Commissioner White.
See, actually, what does she do? Just follow the Bible.
I, Van Henri White.
I, Van Henri White.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And again, sometimes we disagree, but for the most part, no one can ever doubt your passion for our children. And I think, working with President White, I think you guys would make a tremendous team, and look forward to continue to support you. So I nominate Cynthia Elliott for Vice President.
And is there any further discussion?
I, I just wanna say, one of the things that I've come, although me and Cynthia have not always agreed over the years, we, we've always worked well together, one of the things I wanna say that I appreciate most, which sometimes is lacking in many elected officials when they come into government, is, is their consistency and authenticity. And one thing about Cynthia Elliott is that you know where she stands. Whether or not you agree with her or not, you're gonna, you're gonna know where she stands. And that's something that in my life is extremely, extremely, extremely important. And I hope that you continue that authenticity, that consistency, and, and that passion. And I look forward to working with you over the next year, as we embrace these, these challenging times that we'll, that we'll face as a district.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yes, I, I feel a responsibility to explain why I cannot support you, Cynthia Elliott. Commissioner Elliott, you are absolutely passionate, I appreciate the crusading, to take Commissioner Cruz's language, you know, we've had one-on-one conversations where I appreciate 100% your experience, your intent, but we do fundamentally disagree on some of the big picture potential solutions for improving public education. And because you are honest and straightforward, and it's very clear where you stand, and that's very much appreciated, and where I stand is in a different place in terms of the potential for public education, and a potential even elimination of, you know, a democratically-elected school board. So I, I do feel that I cannot support for a leadership position someone who has honestly and straightforwardly, with your rationale, expressed a willingness to advocate for the ending of a democratically-elected school board. So I support you, I look forward to working with you in all capacities, but I, I cannot vote for you for a leadership position for that reason.
Is there any further discussion?
Further nominations?
I'll take a, okay, yes, I mean, there's no further discussion than that nomination. Are there any further nominations for the Office of Vice President for the year 2014?
Yes, Madam Clerk. I, I would like to nominate Willa Powell. And before I give my remarks about why Willa is worthy of this particular position, I wanna say, actually repeat the conversation I had with Commissioner Elliott earlier on today. This is not an instance of me voting against her, this is an instance of me voting for someone. So for you folks who like to write headlines, this is not the headline today. The headline is Van is speaking affirmatively for someone who he has worked with for at least the last six years, and in that relationship, in my mind, and in my mind, I'm only here to cast a single vote, has shown herself worthy of the position of Vice President. And why, you may ask, do I believe she is worthy? No one has guided this district more skillfully, more knowledgeably, through the difficult finances of this school board than Willa Powell. There were times where other people were asked to take over the, the Finance Committee and didn't have the time or the effort for that effort. And we would not have had, we would not have been able to comply with the statutory requirement that we have balanced budgets were not for Willa Powell. And that's not to take away anything from the administration. Again, this is a, these remarks are intended to support a person, not denigrate or disturb the reputation of anybody else. I also wanna say, you know, passion comes in different ways, and I, I would not argue with anybody who said that Commissioner Elliott has lots of passion. But passion sometimes takes the form of very steady, consistent presentation. And on the issue of the budget, and on the issue of young mothers, there's no one, in my mind, no one more consistent and steady than Willa Powell. And then finally, I'm gonna keep it real with you all, we're human, and we look to people who support us and help us in what we think are important. Commissioner Adams earlier on said, you know, I've really taken a liking to replicating those things that work in this district. And every time I have asked for replication of, of a good best practice here in the, in this city or in this community, anytime I've been supportive or critical of something that this administration or prior administrations have done, Willa has found it in her logic and in her reasoning to be there. Again, that's just something, speaking affirmatively about an individual. Now, let me say, no matter how the vote goes, and you all can see where the vote is gonna go, I probably can see it already, I have, and Willa knows this, I have tried, and, and I think I've been relatively successful at supporting the decisions of this Board or the decisions of Superintendent, and I'm gonna do that. And one of the things that makes it very possible is the fact that over the years, Cynthia and I have not always agreed, you know, Malik says he hasn't always agreed with Cynthia, well, that's true for her and I too. But God, and Cynthia, and I, and circumstance have found a way for us to sort of figure out a path to take together. And I expect that if the vote is that she should become Vice President, you will find no better pair, and I would just pair with Malik, no better pair of President and Vice President, Cynthia Elliott and Van White. Thank you.
Motion to close nominations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and I will now capture a roll call.
Point of order, Madam Clerk, you just need to call for the vote on the close nominations. I mean, call for the vote to close nominations, you got a second, but all those in favor.
I'm sorry, I'll, I'll, I'll vote in favor to close nominations.
Aye.
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 Thank you. And I will now capture a roll call vote, beginning with Commissioner Adams, for Commissioner Elliott for the Office of Vice President. Commissioner Adams, what is your vote?
No.
Commissioner Campbells?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Elliott?
Yes.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
Commissioner Powell?
No.
And President White?
No.
I have captured a vote of four three for Commissioner Elliott for the Office of Vice President for the year 2014. I will now capture a vote for Commissioner Powell for the Office of Vice President, beginning in alphabetical order with Commissioner Adams. What is your vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbells?
No.
Commissioner Cruz?
No.
Commissioner Elliott?
No.
Commissioner Evans?
No.
Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
And President White?
Yes.
And I have captured a vote of three four for Commissioner Powell for the Office of Vice President for 2014. Commissioner, Commissioner Elliott has been selected for the Office of Vice President for the year 2014. Please come forward to be sworn in as Vice President.
I, Cynthia Elliott.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New York.
Of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duty of the Office of Vice President.
The duty, duties of the Office of Vice President.
And Commissioner.
And Commissioner.
Of the Board of Education.
And Commissioner of the Board of Education.
According to, according to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Good job. And I now tender the chair to President White for consideration of resolutions specifying employees charged with performing certain functions and other resolutions, including the designation of the official newspaper and certain financial arrangements.
Point, point of privilege, Mr. President, if I may?
Sure.
Yep. I've been lacking in my stay today without recognizing our President, our past President, for the efforts and the work that he has done over these many five?
Six.
Six years as President of the Rochester School Board. There are people who don't last that long in regular terms.
Amen.
And President Malik Evans has served this Board with distinction and a tremendous amount of honesty, and through some very, very difficult times. I remember sitting around, and we all remember sitting around a table during those very, very turbulent times, thinking about having this loss of Superintendent, and where we're gonna go next, and what, what was going on with this district, and, and it, we only stayed together because there was a tremendous amount of glue that held us together, and that glue was really President Evans and his work, and his ability to be able to reach out to each one of us individually, reach out to this community, and reach out to the staff. And I think you leave a legacy, Malik, that, and you leave some big shoes to fill as we go forward. And I personally, and I'm sure others would, would wanna thank you for that and recognize your, your, your dedication to this district, more so than your dedication to the children of this district. So I wanted to thank you.
Thank you.
President White, I'd like to also extend my thanks to, to Commissioner Evans in his role as President, as Commissioner Cruz and probably as others will. You know, I've always voted against President Evans for, for the role, and, and I've always said to him why, but I've always supported him. And I've always been, in my mind, probably the biggest supporter, even though I did not support him, and as he said, we didn't always agree. But when he was elected as President, I've always respected the role, and I've always done what I can do in order to ensure that his, his, his leadership role had the information and had the support in order to do the work that we need to do on behalf of the children of this district. And so I do thank you for your leadership. I'm not sure why you decided not to run, but maybe that'll come to light in the future. But thank you so very much for your commitment to the, to children of our district and serving in the role for, as President for the last six years. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, thank you.
You know, this moment was not gonna pass without you getting some kinda plaque or some kinda gift from "Gifts Remembered." So, that's all the budget could afford, folks. Right, Bill? So, your colleagues wanted you to have something to remember, your six years, was it, Malik? Your six years of service. So what we prepared for you is a gavel that says, Malik Evans, Rochester City School District Board President from 2003, eight, to 2013. Thank you very much. Not that, not that you're going anywhere, but for generations to come, as they talk about legacy, for those who might forget your beautiful face, I asked Shanay to make sure she had a framed picture of you, and this is some really nice wood. You're gonna be immortalized up on the wall with the rest of the past Presidents. This is a nice picture of Malik, it says, Malik Evans, 2008, 2009, 2010, 2011, 2012, 2013.
Mr. President, if I can just take a brief point of personal privilege, I wanna thank, obviously, the community, my colleagues, my family, but more importantly, God almighty, for allowing me to serve as your leader for the past six years, and also for serving as your Vice President for two years. When I started this journey, I didn't start getting gray hair in my beard, wasn't married, didn't have kids, didn't own a home. I was blessed to be elected at an extremely young age, and, and to really grow into leadership with the Board of Education. And I, and I would not have been able to do that without the support of all of you who put your confidence in me year after year in order to have this position. Now, that's the good news, but the bad news for you guys, I'm not going anywhere. As Commissioner White mentioned, you know, this face that looks, that some people say looks like Denzel Washington a little bit, is gonna be sitting around here for, for a couple more years. And I look forward to continuing to work hard on behalf of the students, families, and, and the community of Rochester. I, I do wanna say that we do face some turbulent times coming, coming forward. But I've always been taught by my beloved mother, God bless her soul, and by my father who's in the audience, that we have to keep the faith, even if it's as small as a mustard seed. And I, and I believe that sometimes all we, all we hold on to is that mustard seed. And that's small, if you ever look at a mustard seed. And I still have faith in public education, I still have faith in this body, and I still have, but more importantly, I have an abiding faith in this community. And the last thing I'll say is to, to my colleagues is, I, I know colleagues, sometimes it's easy for us to get discouraged. When you read the headlines, somebody wrote a quote to me that a reporter had the other day where it said, I don't know, it might have been City Newspaper, I can't remember which one it was, and it said, they will elect officers from a board who has very little to show for in terms of accomplishments. And, and I know someone that looked at it, and they got so upset, I said, "Don't get enraged, when you get elected to this office, you have to wear your big boy and big girl pants, so we're used to this stuff." But I, I want my colleagues to know that you, we have a lot to show for it. Because when that child is having problems catching a bus, it's a board member who they call. When that child wants to appeal a suspension, it's a board member who they call. When someone is, is having problems with their child because they're, they have a question with the AIP or something academic, it's a board member who they call. And board members, regardless of all the flack that you get, we are the vanguards of staying on the front lines in terms of making sure that we are the voice of the community. And I know that through Commissioner White and Commissioners Elliott's leadership, that we will continue to be that, along with our great Superintendent, Dr. Vargas, and I look forward to being a part of that for many, 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 many years to come. So, thank you so much for allowing me to have had the opportunity to serve as your leader. And I hope that I can continue to serve in, in this capacity of a board member over the next couple of years. Thank you.
I just wanted to say something real quick. One of the things I've admired about you is that you're, not only are you a friend, but the way that you consistently protect the integrity of this body. When you represented us on mayoral control, even when you've had personal issues that have come up, you've always demonstrated such strength. And nothing gets by you at all. And yet, having a newborn son, you were still able to rise to the occasion. You just do things very effortlessly. And, and I just, I respect you as a leader, and one of the things that I've seen from you is that no matter what you get from people, you always give them respect. And to me, that's not only compassion, but just someone that is a strong leader. I'll miss you in that role and look forward to seeing President White in that role, but thank you for serving.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, now we gotta get on with some serious stuff. There'll be more speeches, I know you wanna hear more, but in the meantime, we have some serious business to take care of. Our clerk has indicated to us that we have to, for the record, indicate which people are gonna be performing certain functions. So, this comes in the form of resolution. So, I'll ask for, my colleagues have the items for consideration for the meeting of the Board of Education. And for those of you who aren't aware, this is our business meeting, it's how we organize ourselves. And so we have to designate, for example, a purchasing agent. So, my colleagues have Resolutions nine, nine, 397.
And I know that through Commissioner White and Commissioners Elliott's leadership, that we will continue to be that, along with our great superintendent, Dr. Vargas, and I look forward to being a part of that for many, 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 many years to come. So thank you so much for allowing me to have had the opportunity to serve as your leader, and I hope that I can continue to serve in this capacity as a board member over the next couple of years. Thank you.
I just wanted to say something real quick. One of the things I've admired about you is that you're, not only are you a friend, but the way that you consistently protect the integrity of this body. When you represented us on mayoral control, even when you've had personal issues that have come up, you've always demonstrated such strength, and nothing gets by you at all. And having a newborn son, you were still able to rise to the occasion. You just do things very effortlessly. And I just, I respect you as a leader, and one of the things that I've seen from you is that no matter what you get from people, you always give them respect. And to me, that's not only compassion, but just someone that is a strong leader, and I'll miss you in that role and look forward to seeing President White in that role, but thank you for serving.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Now we've got to get on with some serious stuff. There'll be more speeches. I know you want to hear more, but in the meantime, we have some serious business to take care of. Our clerk has indicated to us that we have to, for the record, indicate which people are going to be performing certain functions. So this comes in the form of resolutions. So I'll ask for, my colleagues have the items for consideration for the meeting of the Board of Education. And for those of you who aren't aware, this is our business meeting. It's how we organize ourselves. And so we have to designate, for example, a purchasing agent. So my colleagues have Resolutions 397. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 397?
If I can make a motion, Mr. President, for Resolutions 397 through 408, for the sake of time and weather.
Do you want to take it as a bundle? Can I second to that motion? All right. All those in favor of Resolutions 397 through 408, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, those.
No, no, for 402, 406.
You got that, Madam Clerk? All right. So those resolutions have been passed. Thank you, Commissioner Evans, for helping us move that along. Now we have to do new business, and that's very quick, folks. We just have to, as part of our organizational meeting, we have to identify those people that will staff and run our committees. Every board member is assigned three committees, three committees, and as it turns out, each committee has about three members. So the bylaws require that the president, with the advice and counsel of the full board, make sure that those committees get full. Colleagues, you have a memo that indicates how those assignments are to be. Can I get a motion to approve that particular recommendation or proposal?
Motion to approve by the 2014 Standing Committee assignments as proposed.
Okay. Any discussion?
I'm fine. Thank you.
All right. So that list of assignments has been approved. I did say to the clerk colleagues, and I think I said this to you.
Do we need a vote on it?
Yeah, you got to call for the vote.
I didn't think you had to vote for that.
Yeah, she knows she had a second.
Oh.
Got a second.
Okay.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. That list of committee assignments has been approved. What I had said to my colleagues by email earlier on is, listen, we don't need to sweat the chair personships, because the bylaw says that the committees select the chairperson. So they will meet offline or in their own meetings, and they will decide who the chairperson is of those various committees. The clerk did tell me that the list of committee assignments is on the web. Is that not correct, Madam Clerk? Okay, so it'll be updated. You'll be able to see who the committee members are. I should also tell you, a couple of years ago, we designed this process whereby we solicit input from parents, and we have a parent rep on each and every committee. When's the cycle for parents applying to be on those committees? It's still the same, right?
Spring.
Spring? March or April. So we have a full complement of parents that already serve on each of these committees, but come spring, there'll be an opportunity for folks to get on those committees. It's an opportunity for you to engage. And why am I providing all this explanation? Because people are presumably watching. We want to make sure that people know there's an opportunity for them to get involved. Commissioner Elliott and I, having just assumed these roles, thought it was appropriate to have an opportunity to speak to you all about what it is we want to do and how we sort of see ourselves trying to fill the shoes of President Evans. So Commissioner Elliott?
Thank you, President White. Let me just first thank Commissioner Cruz for nominating me and for Commissioner Evans for seconding that nomination and for the vote from Commissioner Compost and for having the confidence in me that I can do this position. But let me also say to Commissioner Adams, we had a conversation, and that I understand your position, and as we've talked about this before, and I'll, you know, continue to say for the record, it is not necessarily that I support a elimination of this board. I support educating our children. And if we don't seem to be able to get it right in terms of our children being educated, because our children should be first and not the democratic process, it is from that position that I support any alternatives that are going to educate our children. They are the reason why we are in existence. Let me just also say to Commissioner Powell, you know, this, me, as you all know, I was interested in the presidency, but obviously would not have been supported in that. And there were some commissioners here who said that they would support me, and so that's why I decided that to accept the support and to serve in this capacity as well. And then let me just also congratulate our new president, White, on this role, and I look forward to working with him and to support him as well as I supported Commissioner White. You know, as we have not always gotten along, and we probably will not get along because we have divergent points of views. But the fact of the matter is, is that divergent and diversity is good. And so, you know, I will look to work from a perspective of how we can bring those together. I am no longer interested in having any kind of parade or show on television, but how do we educate our children? So I will no longer expend any energy in trying to have a sort of, for lack of a better term, I'll just say peeing match on television for anybody. And so I look forward with all of my heart, working with you, President White, in this position. But I also want to thank my family and my friends and members of the clergy who were here that have supported me. And I also, most of all, want to thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, who allowed me to be a co-laborer with Him in this work. As many of you may know, I was diagnosed with a very serious illness last year. As such, I was considering not running for reelection. When I would discuss this with some people who I highly respect, there's one camp who would say, "Well, Cynthia, you've been in this community for 40 years, and you've served this community, and you don't owe this community a thing. So if you decide that you don't want to run, you have served this community." There was another camp who would say, "Cynthia, I know you've had a serious illness. I know you've had a crisis that you've had to endure, but we need your voice on the board. You have to run. You are not afraid to speak the truth, and you love our children. So you got to run. I know you've been sick. I know you've had those issues, but we need your voice on there." And so after considering those positions, I actually had made the decision not to run for reelection. I called my mentor and the great Honorable and Honorable David Gant called me and asked me if I was going to run, and I told him then I would not run, not seek reelection. But I went to bed and woke up the next morning, and normally in the mornings, I do daily biblical devotions. I was trying to pray this one morning and could not, could not pray, could not get a breakthrough. And it was as if God was saying to me, "You've got to run. You've got to change your mind." At that moment, I changed my mind. I know God wants people like me, who have the experience working with children and families, and the training in leadership and organizational systems, to serve in this capacity. I knew I was called to this position the first time I sat in that seat in 2006. It was at the age of 16 that I felt this angst that I was supposed to be doing something, but I didn't know what it was. So for more than 30 years, I carried around this burden. But it was not until I sat in the chair, one of these seats, that that burden disappeared. I knew I was where God had called me to be. It is because God has called me to this position that I have the faith that we will educate Rochester's children. My personal vision for the students of Rochester City School District is that we will educate 100% of its students, and they will be ready for college and whatever career that they decide to seek. And they will be able to compete in the global marketplace. It is for the community that I love and the children of this district that I love, that I will once again serve and represent the citizens of Rochester and the board, on the Board of Education. And I also want to just take an opportunity to thank my niece, Nakaya, who worked with me on this campaign. You talk about a young woman who was out there with me. Every time I was out there, she was there knocking on the doors, and she had got so good until she could just go to the door herself and ask for support for me, for her aunt. And she's a student at East High School. Would you just stand for a minute? Let me just also, this is my younger sister, Natalie Mayer. I'd like for her to stand. She already gave me the aye, but I'd like for her to stand. And also, my aunt is here with me, Veronica Jones, and her friend Jim Arndt. I'd like for them to stand. They have been such great supporters of me doing this journey, and I'd just also like to dedicate this to my aunt, Evelyn Mann, who, my aunt was 101 when she passed away. And we used to talk on the telephone all the time about what I was doing, and she was just so proud, as the rest of my family is, is proud of me as well. And so I just want to thank them all, and I want to thank you all and thank my colleagues here, and I ask that God richly bless the staff and our students of the district and every citizen in the city of Rochester and Monroe County. Thank you so very much.
Let me say, some of you may have not have heard, but my understanding is that Mayor Warren's grandfather has passed away. And I cannot imagine a more difficult job than being mayor of the city of Rochester, and then to have to begin it after someone so important to you has passed away. The blessing here, from my personal vantage point, is that she was really blessed to have, obviously, someone very loving and caring and influential in her life. And equally significant is God's blessing that he was able to participate in her election and was there in spirit, if not completely in mind, to see her get sworn in. So just a brief moment of silence for someone who I think is going to need all of our prayers and all of our support. And on behalf of the board, I don't even think I have to ask a single person this question. She has the board's entire support. And we'll begin that with just a brief, very brief moment of silence in support of our new mayor. The next thing I want to say is congratulations to Commissioner Elliott. We're not going to spend a lot of time talking about the history, because, as you all know, having driven here today, if you spend too much time looking out your rearview mirror, you're going to hit something going forward. Cynthia and I and this entire community needs to look forward, and that's what we're going to do. So congratulations, Cynthia.
Thank you.
I also should begin by thanking my family for their love and support that they have given me and my long career in public service. They have really, every one of them that came up today, they're still here, they have been there for me in ways that I'm sure you all know, because you're all dedicated servants too. I do have to say, my wife, Bridgette, has always been there for me, and this year, like with Cynthia, was a particularly challenging year for me, because I too had a diagnosis that was quite scary. And I had the support of my entire family, but I'll tell you, my wife, she came through like a champ. I can think of moments in the hospital after the surgery, I awoke and she was there lying at my feet, not having slept at all. And then she had to get up and go speak on my behalf at one of the committee assignments, and she got more votes than I ever got out of a committee assignment. I am very blessed to have her. My children, Brandon, Brittany, Omira is my child, and Ava, they all have sacrificed so much just to allow me to do what I feel I need to do in the community. All my siblings, you saw my older brother there, David. If you guys want a textbook of a big brother, that's the man right there. My siblings, Renee, Sam, Sharice, Dee. Did I miss anybody? I don't think I missed anybody. I think I got them all. The reason why I'm calling out their names is, they are, I understand they have clicked on, and they are watching this webcast. So I wanted to thank them, because they have all been a part of who I am. My friend, Michael, who is not family, but he's like family. He's been around for many years. And my mom, who is watching, 82 years old, praise God. Can we give my mom a round of applause? She is watching from Atlanta, Georgia, and she has done so much for even people in this room you all don't even know about it. And I am very proud of her, as I'm sure she has a little bit of pride in her son, but that doesn't happen without, as you all know, without good family behind us. Of course, I have to thank my colleagues. This moment would not be possible without their support, and I've had that support for many years, whether I was running for office or not. They have indeed become like family. We have shared some experiences that only family members share. We have laughed together. We have argued. We have shared in the joy of babies coming into the world. We've also had to experience the pain and death of people and our loved ones leaving this world together. Some of us have even shared our trials and tribulations relating to raising children. And unfortunately, as Cynthia has indicated, we've even had to share some serious health-related challenges together. These are the kinds of events that draw people closer together as family. But there is more to this notion that we are a family here. It goes beyond the fact that we've shared some personal tragedies and triumphs over the years, guys. The fact is, we, all the board members, the parents, the superintendent, Dr. Vargas, his staff, the folks here in central office, cafeteria workers, professionals, principals, and custodians, all sharing the dream of safe schools and successful students. This goal, this dream that we have, unites us like DNA unites family members. I truly believe that inside each of us are the identical strands and molecules that make us want to see to it that every child in this district succeeds. That's why we're all here. That's the vision. The dream is that for each and every one of our children, without regard to the color of their skin or the content of their parents' wallets, is drawn together like a family to succeed. With regard to that dream, upon hearing that I might become president of the school board, a very dear friend of mine sent me a text, and he said something like this, "Congratulations on attaining your dream." And while I love this man, he's got it wrong. Becoming president is not my dream. While I am extremely honored and privileged to serve as your president, becoming president was not and is not my dream. When I was first sworn in at Number 50 School in 2007, which was a school that I attended when I was a child, I dreamed of schools that were the envy of the region. I dreamed of children reading above grade level. I dreamed of proud parents watching their children and grandchildren, ready for college and ready for the future, graduating on time. That was my dream. I know that many of you have been working on making these dreams happen for many, many years, long before I got up here. I know that you have doubts. I know that you are frustrated. I know that you are weary and tired and exhausted from your work in our schools and in your homes. You are tempted to go back to sleep and just dream of how good things could be. However, the message from your family here is, don't give up. Rather, it is time to wake up, for you have a Board of Education, a superintendent of schools, and thousands and thousands and thousands of district employees who will be your nodos. They will be your five-hour energy drink. We will be there for you, as you have been there for us, with an encouraging word, holding up those who do well, giving hugs to those who are struggling, supporting your work with programs that we know work. And if we can squeeze it out of Bill and the superintendent, we'll be there with an extra FTE for you. That's a full-time employee, by the way. As with family, we will be true to our word, that we will do whatever it takes to make the dreams of our families and our children come true. But the truth is, folks, this will be hard work, and it will require focus. So let us look at our work with a renewed sense of hope and urgency, with the understanding that what we wish for, we must first work for, and that the dreams of our children will be constructed on the diligence and expectations of the adults and family members who are there to guide them, care for them, and love them. For this is family, and this is how we will build our future. Thank you, and God bless.
With your indulgence, Mr. President, I'm really moved by the sense of unity that you're building in those remarks and reflected on all the many trials and tribulations that I've brought through my life and family to this board too. And you seemed to touch every heartstring along the way. In the spirit of trying to build that unity and unity of purpose, I have a remark to my colleague, Commissioner Elliott, as I react to her acceptance speech. Commissioner Elliott, I would ask you to consider not the possibility, not the probability, but the certainty that the calling that you feel is not yours alone, that every board member here feels that same sense of purpose and that same calling from God. I don't talk about it, save in my own church and family, but, because I think that's very private business. But I struggle when I hear any... But I struggle when I hear any of my colleagues say, "I care about the children, and I'm called by God," and the assumption being that you therefore are not. I ask that you open your mind and your heart to the possibility that you are not alone in that, and that we may see different paths, and in the seeing, communicate what it is we see. You know, the story of the two blind men that are trying to identify an elephant. If they're touching and exploring different parts of the elephant, they have no sense that they're looking at the same animal, until they begin to share what they have experienced themselves. So, thank you, Commissioner White, Mr. President, for your remarks about unity, and I hope that that is the reality that we can build.
All right. Well, I think now is the time to get home safely.
Motion to adjourn.
No, 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 no. Hold on. Yeah, let go of that gavel. I wanted to say first, now is the time for people to get home safely, and pray that we all can exercise the kind of intelligence and unity that is required to move this district forward. Now, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded. Motion has been seconded. This meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody. Safe.
Great presentation here.